Good morning. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving last week. I'd like to welcome Good morning. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving last week. I'd like to welcome Good morning. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving last week. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, November 28th, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners everybody to the Tuesday, November 28th, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners everybody to the Tuesday, November 28th, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. At this time, I'd like to welcome Forward Pastor Mike Spencer with Denton Bible Court. At this time, I'd like to welcome Forward Pastor Mike Spencer with Denton Bible Court. At this time, I'd like to welcome Forward Pastor Mike Spencer with Denton Bible Church. And Mr. Spencer is going to lead us in our invocation and our pledges we led Church and Mr. Spencer is going to lead us in our invocation and our pledges we led Church. And Mr. Spencer is going to lead us in our invocation and our pledges we led by Zach Davis with our Agrolife Extension Office. And if you'll please stand, I want by Zach Davis with our Agrolife Extension Office. And if you'll please stand, I want by Zach Davis with our Agrolife Extension Office. And if you'll please stand, I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Thank you for the privilege of being here with you today. Let's pray. Father in heaven, Thank you for the privilege of being here with you today. Let's pray. Father in heaven, Thank you for the privilege of being here with you today. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we bow before you in gratefulness as we have just as a nation celebrated a holiday called we bow before you in gratefulness as we have just as a nation celebrated a holiday called we bow before you in gratefulness as we have just as a nation celebrated a holiday called Thanksgiving. We realize that you have blessed us so much and Thanksgiving should be every Thanksgiving. We realize that you have blessed us so much and Thanksgiving should be every Thanksgiving. We realize that you have blessed us so much and Thanksgiving should be every day in our lives and in our hearts. I thank you for this wonderful country you've given day in our lives and in our hearts. I thank you for this wonderful country you've given day in our lives and in our hearts. I thank you for this wonderful country you've given us, Lord, the natural resources that help us enjoy a comfortable life and prosperity us, Lord, the natural resources that help us enjoy a comfortable life and prosperity us, Lord, the natural resources that help us enjoy a comfortable life and prosperity in ways that people have never known before. I thank you, Lord, for this great state of in ways that people have never known before. I thank you, Lord, for this great state of in ways that people have never known before. I thank you, Lord, for this great state of Texas and I thank you, Lord, for this county and this city. And I ask your blessing upon Texas and I thank you, Lord, for this county and this city. And I ask your blessing upon Texas, and I thank you, Lord, for this county and this city. And I ask your blessing upon this meeting here today, these men and women that serve you. As your scripture says, give this meeting here today, these men and women that serve you. As your scripture says, give this meeting here today, these men and women that serve you. As your scripture says, give honor where honor is due, and I'm here to do that today. Please grant them wisdom as honor where honor is due, and I'm here to do that today. Please grant them wisdom as honor where honor is due, and I'm here to do that today. Please grant them wisdom as they seek answers to make good decisions for the life of this county and the prosperity they seek answers to make good decisions for the life of this county and the prosperity they seek answers to make good decisions for the life of this county and the prosperity and our future. We do ask for your comfort and strength for those who at this holiday and our future. We do ask for your comfort and strength for those who at this holiday and our future. We do ask for your comfort and strength for those who at this holiday season might have lost loved ones and it might be a sad time for them. Would you comfort season might have lost loved ones and it might be a sad time for them. Would you comfort season might have lost loved ones and it might be a sad time for them. Would you comfort them and use us in any way to do that? So, Lord, we thank you and we honor you for all them and use us in any way to do that? So, Lord, we thank you and we honor you for all them and use us in any way to do that? So, Lord, we thank you and we honor you for all the good things for your good, good God. And we pray your blessing upon this day and the good things for your good, good God. And we pray your blessing upon this day and the good things for your good, good God. We pray your blessing upon this day and we we ask it in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen. we ask it in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen. ask it in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Good morning. Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance Good morning. Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance Good morning. Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. indivisible. indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Zach. At this time, I'd like to go Thank you. Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Zach. At this time, I'd like to go Thank you. Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Zach. At this time, I'd like to go to item one, which is for input, public input for items not listed on the agenda. And to item one, which is for input, public input for items not listed on the agenda. And we to item one, which is for input, public input for items not listed on the agenda. And we we do have one individual, we have two actually. We have Jackie Shaw is here and we have Victoria do have one individual, we have two actually. We have Jackie Shaw is here and we have Victoria do have one individual, we have two actually. We have Jackie Shaw is here and we have Victoria Myers. Jackie, which one did you want to go first? Was there, you wanted to go first Myers. Jackie, which one did you want to go first? Was there, you wanted to go first Myers. Jackie, which one did you want to go first? Was there, you wanted to go first? intro? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to welcome forward Jackie Shaw. Good to see intro? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to welcome forward Jackie Shaw. Good to see Okay, so at this time, I'd like to welcome forward Jackie Shaw. Good to see you this you this morning. you this morning. morning.
Good morning. Good to see you as well, Judges. As Judge Eas says, I am Jackie Shaw
Good morning. Good to see you as well, Judges. As Judge Eas says, I am Jackie Shaw
Good morning. Good to see you as well, Judge Eas. As Judge Eas says, I am Jackie Shaw and I am the chair for the MLK Committee in Lewisville. And I'm coming here because
and I am the chair for the MLK Committee in Lewisville. And I'm coming here because
and I am the chair for the MLK Committee in Lewisville. And I'm coming here because
I would like to invite each of you and of course Denton County to our MLK celebration
I would like to invite each of you and of course Denton County to our MLK celebration I would like to invite each of you and of course Denton County to our MLK celebration in Lewisville. We have two. We have one at night, which is our 30, 31st anniversary
in Lewisville. We have two. We have one at night, which is our 30, 31st anniversary
in Lewisville. We have two. We have one at night, which is our 30, 31st anniversary to have this MLK program that we partner with LISD School District and give awards to have this MLK program that we partner with LISD School District and give awards
to have this MLK program that we partner with LISD School District and give awards
to the students, elementary through 12th grade, first, second, third, and fourth. And to the students, elementary through 12th grade, first, second, third, and fourth. And
to the students, elementary through 12th grade, first, second, third, and fourth. And
the categories is essay, art, 3D art, and photography. So, we would love to invite
the categories is essay, art, 3D art, and photography. So, we would love to invite
the categories is essay, art, 3D art, and photography. So, we would love to invite
you. That is at six o'clock on MLK Day, which is Monday, January 15th, and it's at 6:00
you. That is at six o'clock on MLK Day, which is Monday, January 15th, and it's at 6:00 you. That is at six o'clock on MLK Day, which is Monday, January 15th, and it's at 6:00
PM at Lewisville High School, Lewisville High School Auditorium. So, if you could
PM at Lewisville High School, Lewisville High School Auditorium. So, if you could PM at Lewisville High School, Lewisville High School Auditorium. So, if you could join us for that, we would appreciate you. And I would follow this up with an email.
join us for that, we would appreciate you. And I would follow this up with an email.
join us for that, we would appreciate you. And I would follow this up with an email. And then also, we have our morning with Judge Eas and Commissioner Mitchell. You have been
And then also, we have our morning with Judge Eas and Commissioner Mitchell. You have been
And then also, we have our morning with Judge Eas and Commissioner Mitchell. You have been
instrumental in the Champion Macedonia Cemetery cleanup, which is the historic African American
instrumental in the Champion Macedonia Cemetery cleanup, which is the historic African American instrumental in the Champion Macedonia Cemetery cleanup, which is the historic African American
cemetery in Lewisville located behind Huffin's dealership. In 2022 was our first cleanup
cemetery in Lewisville located behind Huffin's dealership. In 2022 was our first cleanup cemetery in Lewisville located behind Huffin's dealership. In 2022 was our first cleanup on MLK Day, putting the call out to say let's bring attention, awareness, and beautify on MLK Day, putting the call out to say let's bring attention, awareness, and beautify
on MLK Day, putting the call out to say let's bring attention, awareness, and beautify
this cemetery within 30 days to put the word out, thinking only 25 people would show
this cemetery within 30 days to put the word out, thinking only 25 people would show
this cemetery within 30 days to put the word out, thinking only 25 people would show up up, and over 350 people showed up. And Judge Eas, you were there first on the scene along
up, and over 350 people showed up. And Judges, you were there first on the scene along with
and over 350 people showed up. And Judge Eas, you were there first on the scene along with Ms. Mitchell, so thank you for that. And then so with that being said, we have with Ms. Mitchell, so thank you for that. And then so with that being said, we have
Ms. Mitchell, so thank you for that. And then so with that being said, we have a young
a young lady that saw our news clip. So, we had four different news clips out there a young lady that saw our news clip. So, we had four different news clips out there
lady that saw our news clip. So, we had four different news clips out there on that day.
on that day. So, and it's about beautifying and doing restoration to the Champion Macedonia on that day. So, and it's about beautifying and doing restoration to the Champion Macedonia
So, and it's about beautifying and doing restoration to the Champion Macedonia Cemetery.
Cemetery. So, this young lady contacted me after one of the news clips on Channel Cemetery. So, this young lady contacted me after one of the news clips on Channel
So, this young lady contacted me after one of the news clips on Channel Eight, and it
Eight, and it touched her heart to where she wanted to take on the Champion Macedonia Eight, and it touched her heart to where she wanted to take on the Champion Macedonia
touched her heart to where she wanted to take on the Champion Macedonia Cemetery as
Cemetery as her Girl Scouts gold project. So, she reached out to me and we have been Cemetery as her Girl Scouts gold project. So, she reached out to me and we have been
her Girl Scouts gold project. So, she reached out to me and we have been working with Ms.
working with Ms. Mitchell, Commissioner Bobby Mitchell, for over a year and a half with working with Ms. Mitchell, Commissioner Bobby Mitchell, for over a year and a half with
Mitchell, Commissioner Bobby Mitchell, for over a year and a half with trying to move
trying to move forward to beautify this Champion Macedonia Cemetery. And she's going trying to move forward to beautify this Champion Macedonia Cemetery. And she's going
forward to beautify this Champion Macedonia Cemetery. And she's going to come forward
to come forward in just a minute and tell you a little bit about what she's doing and to come forward in just a minute and tell you a little bit about what she's doing and
in just a minute and tell you a little bit about what she's doing and what her plans
what her plans are. I would like to say instead of a cleanup on MLK Day, which is Monday, what her plans are. I would like to say instead of a cleanup on MLK Day, which is Monday,
are. I would like to say instead of a cleanup on MLK Day, which is Monday, January 15th,
January 15th, we will have a reveal for all the work that has been done out there. January 15th, we will have a reveal for all the work that has been done out there.
we will have a reveal for all the work that has been done out there. Instead of taking
Instead of taking one day to clean up the cemetery, we have been doing it in the course Instead of taking one day to clean up the cemetery, we have been doing it in the course
one day to clean up the cemetery, we have been doing it in the course of Saturdays.
of Saturdays. So, it is a beautiful sight. We have a Boy Scout that has taken on the of Saturdays. So, it is a beautiful sight. We have a Boy Scout that has taken on the
So, it is a beautiful sight. We have a Boy Scout that has taken on the cemetery for
cemetery for his Eagle Scout project, Nathan, and to do a tribute to the veterans. So, cemetery for his Eagle Scout project, Nathan, and to do a tribute to the veterans. So,
his Eagle Scout project, Nathan, and to do a tribute to the veterans. So, that has been
that has been taking place. And so, we will recognize these two young people on MLK that has been taking place. And so, we will recognize these two young people on MLK
taking place. And so, we will recognize these two young people on MLK Day for the reveal.
Day for the reveal. So, with that being said, if I can introduce you to Ms. Victoria Myers Day for the reveal. So, with that being said, if I can introduce you to Ms. Victoria Myers
So, with that being said, if I can introduce you to Ms. Victoria Myers that will talk
that will talk to you. that will talk to you.
to you.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Victoria. Good morning, Victoria. Good morning, Victoria.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
She's over there doing her homework. That's how studio she is. So, a lot of people She's over there doing her homework. That's how studio she is. So, a lot of people She's over there doing her homework. That's how studio she is. So, a lot of people sleep in these meetings. I'm glad that you're doing homework. So, that's great. And I wrote sleep in these meetings. I'm glad that you're doing homework. So, that's great. And I wrote sleep in these meetings. I'm glad that you're doing homework. So, that's great. And I wrote her a note to her attendance clerk. So, for excuse. her a note to her attendance clerk. So, for excuse. her a note to her attendance clerk. So, for excuse.
But today will be excused, thankfully. Good morning, everyone. My name is Victoria
But today will be excuse, thankfully. Good morning, everyone. My name is Victoria
But today will be excuse, thankfully. Good morning, everyone. My name is Victoria Myers. I'm a 12th grader at the School for Talented and Gifted at Town View downtown
Myers. I'm a 12th grader at the School for Talented and Gifted at Town View downtown
Myers. I'm a 12th grader at the School for Talented and Gifted at Town View downtown Dallas and a Girl Scout of Troop 2477 and also the leader of Project 80 Roots. Project
Dallas and a Girl Scout of Troop 2477 and also the leader of Project 80 Roots. Project
Dallas and a Girl Scout of Troop 2477 and also the leader of Project 80 Roots. Project 80 Roots is my Girl Scout Gold Award where we seek to beautify the Champion Macedonia
80 Roots is my Girl Scout Gold Award where we seek to beautify the Champion Macedonia
80 Roots is my Girl Scout Gold Award where we seek to beautify the Champion Macedonia Cemetery through benches, light posts, new fencing, as well as learning more about the
Cemetery through benches, light posts, new fencing, as well as learning more about the
Cemetery through benches, light posts, new fencing, as well as learning more about the buried individuals there. In fact, many of the graves are without names, a headstone,
buried individuals there. In fact, many of the graves are without names, a headstone,
buried individuals there. In fact, many of the graves are without names, a headstone, or even a date. So, much information and history were lost due to carelessness and/or
or even a date. So, much information and history were lost due to carelessness and/or
or even a date. So, much information and history were lost due to carelessness and/or
discrimination. But the goal of Project 80 Roots is to bridge that gap from the unknown
discrimination. But the goal of Project 80 Roots is to bridge that gap from the unknown discrimination. But the goal of Project 80 Roots is to bridge that gap from the unknown
and be one step closer to receiving justice. I found out about the cemetery through a
and be one step closer to receiving justice. I found out about the cemetery through a and be one step closer to receiving justice. I found out about the cemetery through a no story about a cleanup on MLK Day at the cemetery. I saw the potential and found the
no story about a cleanup on MLK Day at the cemetery. I saw the potential and found the
no story about a cleanup on MLK Day at the cemetery. I saw the potential and found the contact information to Ms. Jackie Shaw, and she soon became my sponsor so that I can
contact information to Ms. Jackie Shaw, and she soon became my sponsor so that I can
contact information to Ms. Jackie Shaw, and she soon became my sponsor so that I can
be involved. And once we got the ball rolling, Project 80 Roots has had three news interviews
be involved. And once we got the ball rolling, Project 80 Roots has had three news interviews be involved. And once we got the ball rolling, Project 80 Roots has had three news interviews
still being aired today by Spectrum News, WFAA, and CBS. We've spoken at several events
still being aired today by Spectrum News, WFAA, and CBS. We've spoken at several events still being aired today by Spectrum News, WFAA, and CBS. We've spoken at several events
including Pilot Knob Rotary Club, churches, networking events at Girl Scouts, have visited
including Pilot Knob Rotary Club, churches, networking events at Girl Scouts, have visited including Pilot Knob Rotary Club, churches, networking events at Girl Scouts, have visited or spoken to several businesses about the project and more. And with a goal of $60,000,
or spoken to several businesses about the project and more. And with a goal of $60,000,
or spoken to several businesses about the project and more. And with a goal of $60,000, Project 80 Roots has raised just over $7,000, most of which will be put towards a black
Project 80 Roots has raised just over $7,000, most of which will be put towards a black
Project 80 Roots has raised just over $7,000, most of which will be put towards a black iron rod fence around the perimeter. And as you can tell, there is a lot more money
iron rod fence around the perimeter. And as you can tell, there is a lot more money
iron rod fence around the perimeter. And as you can tell, there is a lot more money needed to complete the project. And with your help, it can be done. To donate, you
needed to complete the project. And with your help, it can be done. To donate, you
needed to complete the project. And with your help, it can be done. To donate, you can visit tinyurl.com/2p87cj6a, all lowercase. That's again tinyurl.com/2p87cj6a. Or you
can visit tinyurl.com/2p87cj6a, all lowercase. That's again tinyurl.com/2p87cj6a. Or you
can visit tinyurl.com/2p87cj6a, all lowercase. That's again tinyurl.com/2p87cj6a. Or you can write a check to Victoria Meyer Cemetery Project and mail it to PO Box 110960, Carrollton,
can write a check to Victoria Meyer Cemetery Project and mail it to PO Box 110960, Carrollton,
can write a check to Victoria Meyer Cemetery Project and mail it to PO Box 110960, Carrollton, Texas 75011-0960. But donating isn't the only way to help. Spreading the word to others
Texas 75011-0960. But donating isn't the only way to help. Spreading the word to others
Texas 75011-0960. But donating isn't the only way to help. Spreading the word to others as well as volunteering are valuable ways to get involved. To ensure that the Champion
as well as volunteering are valuable ways to get involved. To ensure that the Champion
as well as volunteering are valuable ways to get involved. To ensure that the Champion
Macedonia Cemetery is well kept and beautiful for many years to come, Project 80 Roots
Macedonia Cemetery is well kept and beautiful for many years to come, Project 80 Roots Macedonia Cemetery is well kept and beautiful for many years to come, Project 80 Roots
must see the project through the end. I have papers here summarizing the general information
must see the project through the end. I have papers here summarizing the general information must see the project through the end. I have papers here summarizing the general information as well as donation information for anyone interested. And I want to say a big thank
as well as donation information for anyone interested. And I want to say a big thank
as well as donation information for anyone interested. And I want to say a big thank you to Commissioner Mitchell, to Denton County Judge Mr. Eads, as well as fellow commissioners
you to Commissioner Mitchell, to Denton County Judge Mr. Eads, as well as fellow commissioners
you to Commissioner Mitchell, to Denton County Judge Mr. Eads, as well as fellow commissioners for allowing me to be here to speak today and summarize the project. So, thank you
for allowing me to be here to speak today and summarize the project. So, thank you
for allowing me to be here to speak today and summarize the project. So, thank you for your time and thank you for listening.
for your time and thank you for listening.
for your time and thank you for listening.
Well, thank you for, thank you for, Victoria, thank you for being here and for being a Well, thank you for, thank you for, Victoria, thank you for being here and for being a Well, thank you for, thank you for, Victoria, thank you for being here and for being a youthful leader. And we need more leaders across the county. And I have hope in our youthful leader. And we need more leaders across the county. And I have hope in our youthful leader. And we need more leaders across the county. And I have hope in our future generation as I hear your presentation. I got to meet you this morning. So, thank future generation as I hear your presentation. I got to meet you this morning. So, thank future generation as I hear your presentation. I got to meet you this morning. So, thank you for your willingness to be involved in the historic preservation. So, it's very you for your willingness to be involved in the historic preservation. So, it's very you for your willingness to be involved in the historic preservation. So, it's very important. Commissioner Mitchell. important. Commissioner Mitchell. important. Commissioner Mitchell.
I just want to thank you again, Victoria. Jackie, I want to thank you for being spearheading I just want to thank you again, Victoria. Jackie, I want to thank you for being spearheading I just want to thank you again, Victoria. Jackie, I want to thank you for being spearheading all of this. It was a wonderful cleanup. Everybody got down and dirty with all the all of this. It was a wonderful cleanup. Everybody got down and dirty with all the all of this. It was a wonderful cleanup. Everybody got down and dirty with all the leaves on them. leaves on them. leaves on them.
And dusty. And dusty. And dusty.
And dust. We had, I don't know how many roll-off that we had with the leaves. And And dust. We had, I don't know how many roll-off that we had with the leaves. And And dust. We had, I don't know how many roll-off that we had with the leaves. And Jerry Hartwell participated in making sure we had roll-off accordance to take leaves Jerry Hartwell participated in making sure we had roll-off accordance to take leaves Jerry Hartwell participated in making sure we had roll-off accordance to take leaves away. away. Thank you for all that you do in the community. This is not the only thing you're away. Thank you for all that you do in the community. This is not the only thing you're Thank you for all that you do in the community. This is not the only thing you're doing. doing. Jackie, what is your other 501(c)(3)? doing. Jackie, what is your other 501(c)(3)? Jackie, what is your other 501(c)(3)?
Shaw Outreach. Shaw Outreach. Shaw Outreach.
Yeah, but you're the one you're doing personally. Yeah, but you're the one you're doing personally. Yeah, but you're the one you're doing personally.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The one you're doing personally. For the transplant, I mean the blood, match one. The one you're doing personally. For the transplant, I mean the blood, match one. The one you're doing personally. For the transplant, I mean the blood, match one. Be the match. 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 Be the match.
Be the match. Be the match. Be the match.
Yes. Jackie's also doing that. Be the match. I want to thank you for all you do Yes. Jackie's also doing that. Be the match. I want to thank you for all you do Yes. Jackie's also doing that. Be the match. I want to thank you for all you do in the community. And Victoria and Dad, because we can't, our kids can't do without the parents. in the community. And Victoria and Dad, because we can't, our kids can't do without the parents. in the community. And Victoria and Dad, because we can't, our kids can't do without the parents. We know that. She's in the 12th grade, so she probably can drive. But Dad, I'm pretty We know that. She's in the 12th grade, so she probably can drive. But Dad, I'm pretty We know that. She's in the 12th grade, so she probably can drive. But Dad, I'm pretty sure that you have to drive her a lot of places and especially have to give her money sure that you have to drive her a lot of places and especially have to give her money sure that you have to drive her a lot of places and especially have to give her money for gas. for gas. for gas.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So, Victoria, I want to thank you for all that you've done. And thank you for taking So, Victoria, I want to thank you for all that you've done. And thank you for taking So, Victoria, I want to thank you for all that you've done. And thank you for taking on this project. It is so wonderful to have young kids that want to be involved to help on this project. It is so wonderful to have young kids that want to be involved to help on this project. It is so wonderful to have young kids that want to be involved to help someone else other than themselves. So, thank you so much and we appreciate you here in someone else other than themselves. So, thank you so much and we appreciate you here in someone else other than themselves. So, thank you so much and we appreciate you here in Denton County. And she does live in Denton County. She goes to school in Dallas, but Denton County. And she does live in Denton County. She goes to school in Dallas, but Denton County. And she does live in Denton County. She goes to school in Dallas, but she lives here in Denton County. I want you to make sure y'all know that. she lives here in Denton County. I want you to make sure y'all know that. she lives here in Denton County. I want you to make sure y'all know that.
I love that. I love that. Well, good. Well, thank you. Thank you for all that you I love that. I love that. Well, good. Well, thank you. Thank you for all that you I love that. I love that. Well, good. Well, thank you. Thank you for all that you do. We'll see you on the 15th for sure. So, is it not a cleanup day or it is a cleanup do. We'll see you on the 15th for sure. So, is it not a cleanup day or it is a cleanup do. We'll see you on the 15th for sure. So, is it not a cleanup day or it is a cleanup day? You said they're going to do a reveal. day? You said they're going to do a reveal. day? You said they're going to do a reveal.
It is. It is not a cleanup day, but we do have a cleanup day coming up December It is. It is not a cleanup day, but we do have a cleanup day coming up December It is. It is not a cleanup day, but we do have a cleanup day coming up December 9th from nine to noon. 9th from nine to noon. 9th from nine to noon.
Perfect. Good. Perfect. Good. Perfect. Good.
So, it's a reveal day. So, it's a reveal day. So, it's a reveal day.
All right. Good. All right. Good. All right. Good.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
And then do we have all her contact information for Victoria so we can promote? We'll get And then do we have all her contact information for Victoria so we can promote? We'll get And then do we have all her contact information for Victoria so we can promote? We'll get that from Jackie to get, so we could, we'd like to help you with the fundraisers. We'll that from Jackie to get, so we could, we'd like to help you with the fundraisers. We'll that from Jackie to get, so we could, we'd like to help you with the fundraisers. We'll promote that out through our newsletters and so forth. Sound good? All right, good. promote that out through our newsletters and so forth. Sound good? All right, good. promote that out through our newsletters and so forth. Sound good? All right, good. Thank you, Victoria. Don't run off. I want to give you this coin to remember your day. Thank you, Victoria. Don't run off. I want to give you this coin to remember your day. Thank you, Victoria. Don't run off. I want to give you this coin to remember your day. Yeah, we'll go down and do a picture. Let's go do a picture with her. Absolutely. Yeah, we'll go down and do a picture. Let's go do a picture with her. Absolutely. Yeah, we'll go down and do a picture. Let's go do a picture with her. Absolutely. Absolutely. Excited? Oh, yeah. Saw that, that's pretty cool. Did she have a good time?
She totally did.
That's what's important.
And I was glad it was all safe.
Crazy experience. Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was, it was kind of holding her breath.
Oh, I'm sure. There's a copy of the comments, guys. All right. Next, let's go to item 3B, which is approval of a proclamation honoring the town of Hickory Creek's 60th anniversary. And we have Mayor Clark and their city manager, John Smith, with us today. Do y'all want to step forward, our friends from Hickory Creek? Commissioner Mitchell, did you want to say anything before we get started?
Good morning. Just want to welcome you here. Thank you for being in Denton County 60 years. As I was reading the proclamation, as April was preparing it, I was saying they were called commissioners back then rather than council members. So I want to thank you for, you all make Denton County a better place to live, work, and play because of the premier services that you give to the citizens in Hickory Creek. When I, when we redistrict and I got Hickory Creek in 2012, I was pleased, and I'm still pleased. We have, we have a wonderful mayor, Mayor Clark, and oh, we have a pretty good city manager. I pick on him all the time, but he's a wonderful city manager, always reaching out to help the other communities and always doing what he can to make Denton County a better place. And you know, when he comes to visit me, he brings a, he brings a blizzard. He calls me and say, are you in your office? And I said, yeah. Well, I'm coming down. Well, he does bring something. You know, a lot of people come and they're empty-handed. John brings me a blizzard. And he brings April one, too. She can't eat it, so we put it in the freezer.
For you later.
I don't eat it later. But I just, you know, I just want to thank you all for all that you do for Hickory Creek, the citizens of Hickory Creek. Hickory Creek is going into being a wonderful place to live, work, and play. Thank you for being a part of Denton County. You all are so wonderful to work with. I love my cities. And I say all the time, and they get tired of hearing me saying, saying it because y'all are so grateful for whatever anyone does for you. That's, that's a pleasure. I mean, you don't get that in all cities, but I happen to have wonderful cities and you happen to be one of them. And I appreciate you, y'all, my friends and my citizens. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And let me just say, it's, it's a distinct honor to be here to represent the citizens of Hickory Creek. It's, it's a, it's an honor to serve as mayor in a town that's represented and, and helped by so many of you on the court. Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Faulkner, Judge, Commissioner Edmondson, and of course, our Commissioner Bobby Mitchell. Thank you. We, you know, we have a long history of working together and building consensus, and you have always, all of you have been so generous with Hickory Creek. You've supported countless road projects that we could never have done on our own. And so we appreciate you. We appreciate all that you've done. But we just appreciate your friendship, too. It's a pleasure to serve. And you know, we all stand on the shoulders of those who came before us. And so I stand on the shoulder of a lot of different mayors, including the one standing next to me, former mayor and wonderful city manager, town administrator, and we have a wonderful staff. So I just want to say thank you for honoring Hickory Creek today with this proclamation. We appreciate it. John?
Just want to say thank you, Bobby. I'll see you next week.
With this blizzard.
Well, I, well, Mayor, I just want to, and John, I just want to thank y'all for being here this morning and happy birthday to Hickory Creek and 60 years. And that's, that's great. And I want to also thank you for your friendship and your partnership. You know, going back to big capital projects like 35, when we worked to expand 35, Hickory Creek was right there at the table, involved in the process with the county as we worked to, to expand that, plus the interior roads to inside the city. And I really love the way that y'all have balanced your natural space preservation. And there's such a great quality of life in Hickory Creek and great amenities for people across the county and across North Texas to come exercise and experience nature and so forth in Hickory Creek. You've done a really good job with that as you've also managed growth and welcomed growth and the benefits of, of a growing and vital community here on the north side of Lake Lewisville. So congratulations. And I just want to thank you for your friendship as well and your involvement in our Mayor's Council and in COVID, all the COVID calls that we did and all our COVID projects. Y'all were on all those calls with us, and y'all were just, just a steady partner in communicating and, and all the activities that we had to do with the Health Department and other things. So I just want to really thank y'all for, for everything, so.
Thank you, and thank you for, for initiating all of those COVID calls. You know, I think one of the bright spots that came out of COVID was the communication that we've built throughout our county, and I appreciate.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you for doing.
Absolutely. It was great. It was great. Okay, so let me read this proclamation we have. So whereas in 1961, a group of people living on or near the banks of Hickory Creek met and decided that they would, they would like to become a town. And whereas on the 24th day of March 1961, Denton County Judge W.K. Baldridge granted the petition and ordered that an election be held at Skoggan Store in the proposed town of Hickory Creek. And whereas on the 29th day of April 1961, an election was held to determine if the town of Hickory Creek could, should be incorporated for municipal purposes as a town under the commission form of government, and 19 people voted yea. And whereas the people of Hickory Creek and, whereas the people of Hickory Creek voted Duval Williams as mayor, as well as Perry Harville and J.M. Smith as two commissioners for what is now known as the Town Council. And whereas the town of Hickory Creek was incorporated on the 25th day of November 1963, consisting of two square miles and a population of 219 people. And whereas 60 years later, with a population of more than 5,627 residents and more than 260 acres of dedicated parkland, Hickory Creek is one of the premier towns in Denton County that offers excellent service to our residents and surrounding communities. And now therefore it be resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court would like to celebrate the 60th anniversary of the town of Hickory Creek and express appreciation for Hickory Creek's participation in making Denton County a great place to live and work. Done in open court this the 28th day of November 2023 upon, upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by the chair. Any other discussion?
Congratulations.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're 26. 60 years, Kevin.
60 years.
Age?
Yeah, I'm sure of that. I'm actually a little bit older, though. Mine was in June.
Just a little bit older.
You're older than the town?
Older than the town.
All right. Next, let's go to item 3. See, this is a presentation of Find Help Denton County launch and any appropriate action. And I don't know who we're going to have for us. Alex, are you going to do the presentation on this? Okay.
This is a great, a great tool to use.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Glad to tell a story on behalf of this amazing crew of folks who have been invested in the Find Help project, as well as Don Cobb, our colleague, has been leading this effort. So I really appreciate your time this morning. I'm going to try to weave together a quick story of what this ginormous binder, fried shrimp and Find Help have to do with one another. And I'll try to do it in five minutes or less. You up for the task, Judge?
Yes, absolutely.
So I got my degree in social work, and whenever I was a young social worker, I worked in a hospital system, and I carried a binder like this everywhere with me. It was actually about double this size, and it had a handle. It was that heavy. And every morning, whenever I went to the hospital in Abilene, we would run in and we would rush as social workers to the room where the cows were held. Even though we were in West Texas, it was not actual cows. We called our computers-on-wheels cows. And we would fight over the cows that had the best wheels because they had to carry binders like this for all of us social workers. And we would slap our binders on, and we would go to the floors where we would meet our patients. And I would go in and I would have the opportunity to talk with patients about the things that meant something to them outside of those hospital walls. And we all have stories of friends, family members, or ourselves who have been in the hospital before, right? It's not everybody's favorite place to be. And I would talk with families about, what are you excited to do when you get out of here? What are the things that have changed since you've been in the hospital? Since you had open heart surgery? What do you need to be successful at home? Is it Meals on Wheels? Is it a walker? And I used my binder to flip through the pages and to find resources for families that allowed them to go home and do the things that were important to them. This binder went everywhere with me, and it meant a lot to me, but it meant a lot to a lot of families as well. Because I'd leave the room and I would go to my binder, and I'd flip through the tabs, and I'd find the resources. And sometimes I'd have to call my best friend and be like, hey, you gave me that resource? What number is that? Like, what, your, your handwriting is illegible, but I need Meals on Wheels, and I can't tell what this says. And oftentimes as social workers, we would make copies and send each other copies of the resources to ensure that our families had access to everything that was available to them. And then one day, when I was a baby social worker, I got a call that I had to visit somebody in the hospital. It was my grandfather, and they were sending him home on hospice. And I went to his room, and I was not a social worker. I had the opportunity to take my social work hat off, but I depended on a social worker with a binder that day. She came in and asked what was important to him, and he told her he wanted to go home and eat fried shrimp. And she left our room, and she went to her binder, and I never saw her binder, but I knew she had one. And she came back in and she said, Mr. Kern, I've got you set up. Someone from hospice is going to be there to meet you. They're going to make sure that you have a hospital bed and a walker, and they're going to make sure that you're there with your family. We're going to get your pain controlled, and your granddaughter told me she's going to pick up fried shrimp on the way home. And I depended on somebody else's binder that day, and I was really grateful that she had one. And Find Help Denton County is going to be an online binder for all of us. It's going to be Courtney's binder from the city of Denton. It's going to be Ashley's binder from the city of Louisville. It's going to be Denton County's binder. No longer am I going to be contingent on knowing that there's someone walking around with one of these that's willing to help. We're going to put all of those collective binders onto the internet and be able to share information with one another. Accessible information. I'm no longer going to have to interpret the handwriting of my colleague that faxed me information. It's all going to be available to each of us as case managers, but also to each of us as family, friends, and neighbors. If your constituents come to your office and need help, we can refer them to Find Help. If someone comes to one of our municipalities that's invested in this partnership, they can go to Find Help. Case managers can securely send referrals through the platform to one another. It's a HIPAA and high-trust certified platform, so nonprofits that don't have IT infrastructure can communicate with one another with ease. So we get to have these binders, and they get to mean something to us. But I'm so excited that this resource is now going to be available to all of our community members. And on behalf of the team behind me, I really appreciate your investment and belief in us to make this something feasible and possible for our community. We'll be happy to take any questions from you all, and thank you for allowing me to tie together fried shrimp and our giant binders.
I love it. Members, are there questions?
I'm just excited about it.
Well, that's all right. I can just hardly wait to get home and tell my cowboy hubby about cows. I was trying to imagine.
A line of social workers outside of the door, like, give me that cow. In West Texas, Commissioner.
Exactly. I'm, I'm excited about it. You know, we talked about it at Behavioral Health. And I'm just glad that we're doing something because not everybody has a binder. And not everybody knows who has the binder.
Exactly.
But they can go online and find where they need to go, where they need to get resources. And we especially need that with our senior citizens.
Absolutely.
In this day and age, so they don't have to thumb through pages, even though I still use a lot of paper. But I love using, going to something, typing something in the end, and it shows me what it is. So thank you all for all your hard work. I appreciate you, all that you do to make Denton County better and make us, and let our citizens have access to the resources that they need and don't have to go all over town calling, asking somebody for them. They can just go right and get them. So I've got a question.
Absolutely.
What if I don't have a, a computer?
That's a great question. So our social service agencies, one of the beauties of Find Help is that our social service agencies can send the resources, print the resources, and create favorites folders. So if there's a resource that's commonly asked for by community members that may not have access to a computer, they can easily get them to the community member by text message or by printing favorites of those resources. That's a great question. They can also be filtered by proximity. So you type in your zip code and the type of service you're seeking, and it will filter the listing to be specific to that request.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Great question.
Yeah. And I, I'm going to concur with everything that's been said. It's, it's great. We, we so desperately need the one-stop shop.
Yes.
That you've created here. And for those of us that need to be able to point people to someone, this is so much easier than trying to figure out exactly where to send someone. And so thank you so much. Much, much needed.
Thank you. And we just really appreciate you all's investment because like you mentioned, it's a place where folks can go in and find reliable information. I Googled food pantry yesterday, and in .62 seconds, I got 1.6 million results. And I thought, this is why we need Find Help. So we really appreciate you all investing in the resource and the, the cities for coming alongside of the project.
Yeah, absolutely.
Congratulations on a successful project.
Absolutely. So we are, Alex, we're live now?
We are live now, so you can find the resource. At findhelp.dentoncounty.gov. And we will make sure that you all in your offices, if you would like, have print materials with QR codes and ways to direct community members to the resource. Absolutely. We'll make sure to get that to you.
Perfect, good.
It's awesome.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to the municipalities for their investments.
Thank you for all the partnerships. That's what makes it meaningful.
Yes.
All right, it's successful. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Let's go to, I'm going to skip forward while we have the Health Department here. Let's go to 9(c), which is approval of a memorandum of understanding between Denton County Public Health and United Way of Denton County for the allocations of the dishes contractual funding for online evidence-based self-care platform. And Matt or Alex, did y'all want to speak to this one?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I just want to, I want to echo Alex this morning, and it's, it's nice to echo somebody that's working so hard. I want to, I want to recognize Alex and her team and this partnership, these partnerships with the city of Denton, the city of Louisville. These things we're talking about this morning are provided by grant funds, so it is budget neutral to the county's budget. These funds were provided by the Department of State Health Services in different grants, and so we're leveraging state dollars for Denton County resources, and we're really proud of that. We're, we're glad to be spending that money here that so it's not returned and spent somewhere else, so our residents benefit. This is another one of those examples. So I'm going to have Alex talk about it. But again, this is a partnership using grant dollars leveraged with a community nonprofit in United Way. This is a way to involve social service agencies in a resource that can be used by everybody in the county. And so we're, we're proud of that. And I'm going to, I'm going to give Alex the lectern again, and she can give you a few details.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
So this project, we're really excited to be launching in partnership with the United Way and the Behavioral Health Leadership Team. As you know, they have a year's worth of experience, years and years of experience, really spearheading collective work around behavioral health in our community. The Credible Mind Resource, as Matt mentioned, will be a grant-funded resource to make mental and behavioral health interventions that are online and evidence-based, available to all community members in Denton County. So anyone can visit the website and indicate, they can take assessments or indicate their areas of concern, whether that be depression, burnout, anxiety, life transition, and they will be provided with online free resources to access at their leisure. So this partnership is really going to allow us to partner with our Mental Health Navigation Program that you all have so generously supported and really offer a continuum of support to community members. So whether they'd like to access something online in their own time or access a therapist, it really is going to offer a full spectrum of support to the community. And we're excited to partner with United Way in them spearheading and being the backbone support of this effort.
Members, are there any other questions?
Thank you. We just keep doing great things.
And I'm so incredibly excited. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. We are one of the first communities in the nation to launch this resource countywide. We are going to be able to get a lot of data and analytics about our usership in an aggregate manner to help bring back that information to you all and to United Way and the Behavioral Health Leadership Team to help us get a better understanding of how we support our, our residents.
Yeah, I totally agree. Are any other questions? Did the chair move for approval? Seconded by Commissioner. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And Judge and Commissioners, thank you again. Just a quick amend, kind of an addendum to that. I wanted to note, the Find Help is a directory. What Alex talked about before. This is an intervention. This Credible Mind is actually modules of training and it's help for those in need. So it's a lot this morning on this. And then finally, I just want to echo this thanks. Your leadership for the Mental Health Navigation provided these opportunities for us to grow and help other communities in Denton County and all of the residents. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hopefully with all these different tools that we're assembling together, we can help make real lasting and meaningful progress on our, to improve the mental health here in Denton County. So I think that's great. All right, we have a motion. Second, do we vote? We vote? Okay, all right, make sure. All right, let's go to 13B. This is a discussion of temporary relocating, temporarily relocating the AgriLife Extension Department from the Joseph A. Carroll Building to the Holcher Building. And any appropriate action? And I'd like to hand it off to Jody Gonzalez, our county administrator, to give us an update on that.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Really, this is an opportunity for you guys to approve the Texas AgriLife Extension Department to be able to move from the Carroll Courts Building to the Holcher Building. And this request is due to really HVAC failures at the Carroll Courts Building. Those HVAC failures were everything that the Facilities Department could do to keep those up and running. With temperature inversions right now that's occurring, we don't know if it's going to be 32 or 82. It's really strained those equipment and caused failures there. So we are asking for court approval to move the AgriLife Extension Department. Those are eight employees, plus they have numerous volunteers and volunteer programs. And they come in and work daily as well as have different meetings of their volunteer organizations and group. Today, we do have Zach Davis with us, our extension agent. And Sean Denis Catherine is with us as well. They're both agents. I've been working with the last few weeks with Stephen Behringer, the other, another one of our agriculture extension agents. And they brought with them some of their volunteers, I think Master Gardener groups with them today. So we're excited to have them here today with you guys. Again, this request is really to give you, give us authority to start moving forward and prepping and being prepared to move them to the Holcher Building. There are some work that still needs to be done. Part of that work is to get the IT network cabling completed and finished at that location over there. That was budgeted with this FY '24 budget. So that's why we were ready to go. We went, we ran into a few procurement issues, but we're working through that as we speak to get them into that location as soon as possible. We do have a meeting tomorrow with Stephen Behringer to walk the Holcher Building, to identify those spaces. And we'll bring you a future agenda item to specifically identify the office space for the record, for the purpose of court history. This is a temporary location. When I say temporary, we believe this is a probably one-year location for them because we are underway to find a final resting, our final home for them to be there at possibly another facility over near Carroll, or I'm sorry, our Courts Building and our juvenile facilities over there. So we're working with that, hopefully months, about a month away from closing that out. John Felton and I are working on those documents with the city of Denton. So we look forward to that and closing out this chapter.
Perfect, good. Thank you, Jody. Zach, did you want to say anything? Thank you for being here and our AgriLife friends and volunteers.
Judge, thank you for having us today. I appreciate you guys taking into consideration our move. We've had some challenges, you know, some of these older buildings can make you pull your hair out at times, but.
You're telling us.
We're looking forward to serving the public in a new location, if you guys deem so. We're excited to be here in a couple of weeks to go over our annual end of the year interpretation where we can show you guys what we have done throughout the year. But any other, that's kind of all I have, you know, any questions, if you guys have them, I'll be happy.
Well, I want to thank you all for your patience. We didn't want to unnecessarily move you all twice. You know, we were trying to prevent this and let you all stay there until we got the other buildings remodeled, you know. But, you know, things change, plans change, you know, especially with equipment failures. And as we try to make some business decisions, the court will be making some business decisions on what to do with the Carroll Building as things have changed. So we will, I just wanted to thank you all for your patience. And I'm glad that the court this last year had to force us to go ahead and acquire the Holcher Building when we did to complete the campus, just like we did the Moore Street facility. You know, remember, we bought that in 19 and wondered what we were going to do with it. We could not have, I can't imagine us not having it right now.
Right.
For all of our different programs that we've done, especially the last couple of years with COVID and needing warehouse space and so forth. So I'm glad that we have a space for you all. And I do commit that our staff's going to do everything we can to get in there and get that done in a timely manner. I know you have lots of meeting spaces. And as we were visiting back in the, a couple of months ago, I guess back in the summer, talking about meeting spaces for the master gardeners and naturalists and so forth. And so you all have plenty of other buildings, you know, that we will make available for you all's assembly space. And obviously, the staff will be over here in the Holcher Building. But we would love to have you all over here in our other meeting rooms across the county. So we appreciate all the volunteer hours. You don't have to come to court to make that presentation with, to make us realize how that we welcome it. I think that's my favorite meeting of the year. But it's always on my mind as I drive around and look at the different projects and see different Facebook posts that you all do throughout the year of the different nature preservations and the beautification efforts that AgriLife does and encouraging our agricultural industry here in the county. You know, we still are a big agriculture producer. We can't forget that. So thank you all for supporting that in meaningful ways. Move to approve? Well, we, we, we'll go ahead and make a, we can make a motion to that. And we'll do an exact space allocation later in the future date. But if we, we can go ahead and make a motion to relocate them to the Holcher Building for a temporary basis, okay? Do we have a second by Commissioner Falconer? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all for being here today.
Good sir, thank you. Appreciate judging Commissioners. We'll be happy to work with Jody on this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, let's go back. Ma'am? Tell her I said hi.
I like that.
We'll go back to the beginning to item two. Our consigned agenda members, are there any items you'd like to pull? Or do we have a motion for approval as presented?
So move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consigned agenda today consists of item two A is approval of the order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of budget amendment request 100310 for the Office of Emergency Management to transfer $8,000 from vehicle equipment to educational supplies to cover the cost of hosting educational events for the public. Item two D is approval of the Road Superintendent Report for the month of October 2023 and any appropriate action. All right, we'll go to, we'll do the three A at the end of the meeting. Let's do five A, approval of the bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIIP Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, interest in DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May?
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
Don't move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A is approval to dispose of miscellaneous furniture and office supplies in compliance of 263152A3 of the Local Government Code for disposition of surplus property and also abandoned inmate property in compliance with Texas Code of Criminal Procedure 1817. Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six B, approval of renewal of Mimecast subscription services from SHI Government Solutions in the amount of $73,758.50 through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPO 4875. Move to approve? We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval renewal of Nutantics Cloud Infrastructure Software Subscription from Freeit Data Solutions Incorporated and approved reseller of Karasov Technology Corporation in the amount of $226,194.25 through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPO 4444. Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approval of renewal of CrowdStrike Incident Response IR Retainer from Solid Border in the amount of $67,000, $67,655 through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPO 4850. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval of purchase of Palo Alto Subscription Services from Presidio Holding Incorporated and approved reseller of Karasov Technology Corporation in the amount of $75,996.20 through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR TSO 48, 4288. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval of purchase of Rapid7 Insight VM Software from Solid Border Incorporated in the amount of $93,864.60 through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR TSO 4365. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G, approval of the purchase of Comprise Intelligent Data Management Software from Presidio Network Solutions LLC in the amount of $67,647.22 through the interlocal purchasing systems tips contract 220105. Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Judge, just quickly on this one, I just want to think. I was talking to Kevin Carr about a lot of these. We obviously spend a lot of money on software as we.
Yeah, a lot.
With these. But this is one where it's a short-term project that will save us nearly $200,000 by going to this. I just appreciate the fact they're looking for ways to not spend their money.
That's great. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. All right, any other discussion? Do we have a motion? A second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval of the purchase of Cohesity Software and Hardware, for expansion of the current Cohesity Platform from Presidio Network Solutions Group LLC through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR TSO 4259 and DIR TSO 4167 in the amount of $269,325.4. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, approval of budget amendment request 100290 for the county jail to transfer $278,435 from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment and human resources overtime policy as recommended by the budget office for the jail to continue to operate as mandated by the Texas Commission on Jail Standards due to shortage of detention officers and any appropriate action. Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The sheriff is here and I would like to publicly thank you, Sheriff, for all your efforts to continue to increase the staffing. They've done a great job of that. And we're, I think we're at 49% staffing right now. Where are we at, Sheriff?
No, sir, we're at 51%.
51? Every, every point helps. Okay.
I just want to thank you guys again. In less than two months, since you guys approved the pay raises, we've improved staffing by 20%.
That's great.
And we are, we have a lot in the pipeline and a lot coming through still. And so I anticipate we will continue to take care of our staffing issue. Thank you, guys.
Good. Thank you, Sheriff.
Some work on your part also.
To onboard that many people. Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody involved in the process. HR and the jail staff has onboard interviewed, did the background checks and all. It's very labor intensive. It's a long lead time. It's a long lead time, so I anticipate even more coming online. So that's great. Thank you. All right, let's go to seven B. Approval of budget amendment request 100300 to roll over unspent funds from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024 for salary assistance benefits and various operating line items for the Texas Department of Justice Department Discretionary State Aid Residential Detention Program in the amount of $139,123.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I got the Andrew Sisters. Seven C, approval of budget amendment request 100320 for the Office of Emergency Management to roll over unspent funds from fiscal year 2023 to 2024 for the Office of the Governor's Citizens Emergency Response Team Response Trailer Grant in the amount of $11,884. The chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven D, approval of budget amendment request 100330 to increase revenues and allocate expenditures for the Public Health HIV Prevention Grant in the amount of $142,212 to provide funding for one outreach coordinator position and associated operating expenses. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hired in the 442nd District Court. One new hired in adult probation. One new hired in juvenile probation. Seven new hires in the sheriff's office. Six of those are detention officers. One demotion in the sheriff's office. One promotion in the sheriff's office. And one new hired in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect, good. Thank you. Next is, that's presented for recording purposes only. Next is nine A, approval of the Denton County WIC Carrollton Clinic funding to come from order line of 5467157035 funding by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the ARPA, and any appropriate action. Move to approval. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven, nine B, approval of Denton County WIC Carrollton Clinic expenses incurred for fiscal year 2024 to be reimbursed by the American Rescue Plan Act 2021, ARPA, and any appropriate action. Move to approval. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is nine B, nine D, excuse me, approval of Denton County WIC Carrollton Clinic expenses incurred in fiscal year 2023 to be reimbursed by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the ARPA. Move to approval. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion?
Judge?
Yes.
Just thank you for all three of these. The, I hear good things about the WIC, the new WIC center.
Yes.
And we look forward to even more permanent solution in the future. But this is, I think was a good move.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you. Next is 10A, approval of the request to hold a public hearing on January.
We may not have voted. I don't.
Did we, did we?
I think I interrupted.
Huh? Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10A is approval of the request to hold a public hearing on January the 9th, 2024 at 9:00 AM for the replat of the Odom addition. Lots 3R1 and 3R2, Block A. This is 2.67 acres located in the Commissioner Precinct 1. Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A, approval of the sheriff's office fiscal year twenty twenty-four equitable sharing agreement and annual certification report for U.S. Department of Justice and any appropriate action.
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B, approve of the audit report for the Denton County Sheriff's Office fiscal year twenty twenty-three, chapter fifty-nine asset forfeiture report as required by article fifty-nine of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve C, approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four interlocal cooperation agreements between Denton County and the City of Crum Police and Fire Departments and the Town of Northlake Police Department for the use of the Denton County radio communication system. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, or approval of United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding request to fulfill allocations of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-nineteen and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll go to item seventeen, which is community updates, and we'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Judge. None, none from me today.
Okay. Commissioner Falconer?
Thank you, Judge. Uh, we've got quite a few things going on, uh, as we're in the holiday season, so Little Elm, we've got a Christmas parade and fireworks show on the first at seven PM at the Lobo Stadium, Christmas tree lighting in Little Elm at the, on the lawn at six PM on December second, and Sunday's on the lawn, uh, also on the lawn, uh, December third, eleven to three. And then we have Shady Shores has letters to the North Pole, so you want to get your letters into Santa here. Uh, that's all day, um, from the first through the twenty-second at one oh one East Henley. Then the five K mile reindeer run on the second, eight thirty, Stevens Elementary School. Colony has the Parade of Lights, uh, this coming Saturday, the second, five forty-five to seven at Town Hall, and Holiday in the Park at Perryman Park on, also on the second, five to eight, and a Christmas spectacular also on the second. The second's a busy day. It's also my wife's birthday. Um, on five thirty to ten thirty at Central Fire Station, pancakes with Santa that same day, um, at Lava Cantina. I think I, that may be, that may, yeah, Lava Cantina. And, uh, then we have in Carrollton, Santa on the square, also on the second, four to eight, and then Christmas at the Perry Museum, uh, on the seventh and the fourteenth at Perry Museum. And Corinth has their annual Christmas, uh, at the Commons, uh, at December seventh from four to eight. Um, and I think that may be, oh, Frisco. Frisco's got several things. They have the five K merry mile on the second from eight thirty, eleven at the, um, Simpson Plaza, Mary Main Street on the second from three thirty-eight, and that's on the Simpson Plaza also, and that's what I have. Thank you so much, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Copper Canyon has Santa Claus at Town Hall on December the second, three to five. Flower Mound has the reindeer run, five K, and the Grinch Sprint. I'm gonna run with the kids in the Grinch Sprint. It's only a one mile run. The reindeer run is fi, is five K, so I'm gonna go with the kids. Uh, Christmas Parade of Lights. Ryan, you can take the other one, the five K.
Okay.
Okay. Christmas Parade of Lights and tree lighting ceremony at, um, Flower Mound also, December the second, six PM, and Christmas Parade, so it's at six. We have the Seventh Annual Lakeside Holiday Event on December the sixth in Flower Mound, Lakeside Parkway. Breakfast with Santa on December the ninth in Flower Mound on Jarro Road at the Cat. We have the Frozen River Run. Kevin, I guess I'll let you have that one on December the sixteenth in Flower Mound, since I can't swim in case the ice breaks. I don't have anything for Hickory Creek.
We have a Holiday in the Park Friday night, this coming Friday.
Okay, good. I'm glad you were here to tell me.
Sycamore Bend.
Okay, thanks.
Sycamore Bend Road.
Okay. Holland Village, we have Coffee with the Mayor December the fourth at eight thirty, and we also have Christmas at the Ranch, the Double Tree Ranch in Holland Village, December the ninth at ten. Santa routes going through Holland Village on December the tenth, six to eight thirty PM. Uh, the fire engine will be riding through the neighborhood, which I think a lot of the cities are doing now. Lake Dallas, we have the Second Annual Merry on Main, December the second, six thirty to eight thirty. In Lewisville, we have Castle Hill Village Shops every Saturday, and then we have a Holiday Squirrel, Stroll in Lewisville. First Friday in Lewisville Lights, December the first, December the second, we have a parade in Lewisville. We have a motorcycle toy run. Okay, Diane, I'm giving you that one at December the second at the Lewisville Grand Theater. I've got to share with everybody. I believe in sharing. And then we have the first Saturday Nature Walk in, on, in Lewisville at the Layla. Judge, can you decorate cookies on December the seventh at the Lewisville?
He's a great.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Santa's Workshop on December the eighth and ninth in Lewisville on, uh, Valley Parkway. Will Hearn's Grand Old Christmas Show, uh, December the eighth, seven thirty PM at the MCL. And then we have the Saturday Bird Walk. I'll take that on December the ninth at seven thirty P, seven thirty AM at Layla. Neighborhood Grant Workshop at Thrive in Lewisville, free information led by the city of Lewisville to learn about grant offering and property enhancement program. Community Conversation, I think this is a good one, the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant in Lewisville on, uh, December the twelfth, talking about food insecurity, and this is going to be at the West Side Baptist Church, healthcare, other services of priorities that are needed. And then a Chance to Dance. I'm gonna take that myself. Winter Formal, December the fifteenth at Thrive. And then Christmas at the Cabin, December the sixteenth at Layla. Uh, come and enjoy Christmas and make a corn husdol or an ornament to take home. That's all I have. That's a lot, but I had to share because I can't do a lot.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, we've got Santa going lots of places, uh, all over the county, and one of the places he's going to go is to Denton. In fact, on the fourth, you can have a photo with Santa at the Civic Center. We also have something sort of interesting. We have Citizen Scientist Annual Christmas Bird Count. We're trying to do, uh, a population count of the various kinds of birds, and it's especially good for people who are interested in helping with something like that. We've got the Adapted Recreation Dance at the, uh, North Lakes Rec Center on December first. On the second, Santa can't be here because he's having photos on the fourth, so we're having Breakfast with the Grinch on the second. There's a Mobile Recreation Unit Park and Play that'll be on Bonnie Bray at McKenna Park on December the second. And then, uh, we've got a little change. The Denton Holiday Lighting Festival is now going to be on the second, which is a Saturday night, so everybody come and, and see our official tree lighting, and we'll have free wassail, uh, wassail tasting contest, music and more. Double Oaks Christmas Tree Lighting is December the fourth. Northlake also on December the fourth is having, uh, Christmas at the Commons, and then in Ponder, they're going to do Christmas in the park on December fourth. December fourth is going to be a very busy day. And I'm sorry, I'll, I'll make every one of those, so y'all don't have to worry about that.
Okay, good.
Um, Ponder is having Christmas in the park December fourth. Roanoke is having December second, hometown holiday, and that's on Historic Oak Street. They're going to have a petting zoo, among other things, and I guess that'll be reindeers that you get to pet. Um, in Southlake, they're going to have a holiday toy and food drive, which is pretty cool. They're going to have this in the police department lobby in Southlake, and they want you to drop off nunchucks of their food and toys for those in need. Trophy Club also is having toys for tots, uh, December first at their police department, and they're going to have, Judge, if you get tired decorating cookies, we have a gingerbread decorating thing.
Oh, I can do that, too.
And Trophy Club on the second. Okay. That's all. I think it's going to be a very merry season throughout Denton County.
Perfect. I don't have an, thank you, Commissioner. I don't have an event to celebrate today, but I do want to celebrate the Flower Mound Chamber of Commerce because they recently, uh, earned and were awarded the five-star accreditation from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce.